It's five o'clock. At this time, I'll call to order the work session for the Perry City Council for April the fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have four. Item three is for items for review and discussion. Item three A is the office of the mayor. Three eight one is the state of the city presentation. As many of you know, we have been asked by a number of different clubs in town to talk about growth here in the city. And so we have put together a presentation that we would like for you to look at critically tonight. It is a draft of what we would like to present. We would like to have your feedback. We'd like to have your questions as we go through it. And if there's any comments, we sure would appreciate that. First, I would really like to thank Ms. Clark for all of the hard work that she's put into this. We can never be satisfied. It seems like every time we look at it, it's like Tabitha. Maybe there's a couple of other things that we need to change. I would like to go through that and have your feedback if I could.
Brilliant. That was a great thing to do.
Oh, yeah, I know. Please try and hold me at law.
We have to talk about least raised now?
Or the lack of. Yeah, this is a presentation we put together. We titled it. We talked about a lot of things, but we wanted to let the community know we are prepared for change. Because once, you know, we're out in the community on a regular basis, one thing that always comes up when I'm talking to people is, boy, Perry is growing. You know, where is all this growth coming from? What's going on? Where is this explosion of growth coming from? What's supporting it all? And, you know, and Perry is growing. I have to say that. But I always tell them, you know, that we've been planning for Perry for this growth over the last ten years through our strategic planning process. We've been looking at it to better understand how we serve the public. But, you know, our goal during this period was to really manage the growth effectively and also preserve the quality of life and the sense of place that we have here in Perry. That's very, very important to all of us. I assure you, that's important to the council or the mayor. Some of the questions you get, I know that all of you get those same questions. You can change that, please. It's how and where is Perry's growth occurring? Because a lot of people don't get outside of what I would call old Perry. And is the city of Perry, this, I mean, this is huge growth. I mean, what are you guys doing about it? And then what are you doing about planning for the future? So those questions I want to answer during this presentation. Population growth, we have had. We've had a thirty-seven point two-nine percent growth in population over the last eight years. We've grown from fourteen thousand five hundred people to an estimated nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine people. And I would say that when the census comes out truly, that number's going to be in excess of twenty thousand people. That has been a consistent growth. If you go back and look at the data, our growth has been between three and four percent consistently for the last twelve years. So we've gone from nine thousand people to over nineteen thousand people in population. So the question becomes, where does all of this come from? What's going on? Where are the people moving in here from? And what's causing the growth? Well, if you look at these numbers, they're unbelievable for Houston County. Our single-family detached home permits have gone up three hundred and thirty-two percent in the last eight years. They've gone from a hundred and three in two thousand and twelve to four hundred and eighty-five, or four hundred and forty-eight, excuse me, four hundred and forty-eight during two thousand and twenty. And I would estimate that we will do over six hundred houses or permits this year, given the pace that we're on currently. We, I think we permitted ninety-five houses in March, and we permitted a hundred and eighty-two so far this year. So we are on trajectory forward in something around six hundred houses. And people ask me, okay, what's causing this? And I think it's three different reasons. Number one, we have the available land that people can build on with the infrastructure to support it. And I will talk about where that land is and how big an area that is. It's also the school system. You're going to see today some schools that are being built in the area to support this growth. And also the growth of Robbins Air Force Base. They have been adding employees constantly over the last couple of years in the engineering field and the software design field. So I think those three things contribute the vast majority of our growth. If you look at this, you know, depiction, if you will, or map, the question is, how big are we going to get? And this kind of gives you an idea. This is the Perry service delivery area as defined in the corporate or in the county's comprehensive plan. And our service delivery area is bordered on the east by two forty-seven, basically Sanders Road in the north, Copine Road on the west, and Fire Tower Road in the south. And everything that you see in the yellow is in the municipal limits of Perry. And these are areas that have been annexed in addition to the traditional downtown that we know. One of the things that I would like to point out, and we don't talk about this, is the growth in the east side of Perry. And I guess it would be the northeast side. I would call your attention to, if you'll look in the northeast side, there is a road that's inlayed there. I don't have a corner, I'm sorry. And it shows different commercial nodes in there. And that's going to be a major thoroughfare that is currently being designed by the city of Perry in cooperation with Houston County. But I would also like to tell everybody that, you know, Perry is not out annexing property just to be annexed and property. We only annex property when we have a request from the landowner to add that to the city of Perry. So I think that's a very important distinction. So if we look at where we're expanding, we're talking about to the east, and I would say to the northeast. This is what we call the East Perry District, I'm sorry, East Perry Utility District. It's the area that's highlighted in the aqua. And in that area, there's thirteen thousand total acres. There's twenty thousand six hundred residential lots that can be developed in that area. There's nineteen hundred acres that's already been developed, subdivisions and industrial complexes. But we estimate there's an additional eighty-six hundred acres available for new development. One of the things that I would call your attention to is on the map in the right-hand corner, up in the extreme northeast area, you see a green line running through that blue area. That is a proposed, it's not proposed, I guess. It's a new sewer system that is being developed as we speak, and much of it is already under development. This will run from Wind River up on one twenty-seven, down almost due south to the Harris Track that's owned by the Houston County Development Authority, where we will put in a new wastewater treatment plant in cooperation with the county. This is, I mean, example of the type of growth that we're witnessing out in that area. This is the, I mean, this is the Tauton Track. It is at Tauton Road and Bear Branch Road. You can see the outline of the new sewer system that will be going in to support this. This is five hundred and eight homes that are going into this one track. Our sewer system will start up at Wind River. It'll run back to this, run due south, as I said, all the way to a new wastewater treatment plant that will be at the Harris Track on the other side of two forty-seven. In addition to a new sewer system, we have just commissioned the Tucker Road Water Treatment Facility. And this is a state-of-the-art water treatment facility. It was needed to support the Perry, East Perry Utility District. And it has capacity of over two million gallons per day. And this will be a water security for multi-generations. And everybody asks me about, how can you say that it's going to be multi-generational supply? Well, if you look at the old water plant we're currently decommissioning at Main Street and Corby Hunt's, it's over seventy years old. So we anticipate this water facility will be here seventy years from now, supplying water to the East Perry Utility District. But, you know, there's always the concerns with this kind of growth. And I know that everybody has, you know, expressed that to me about what impact's that going to have on our community? What is it going to have on the quality of life that we enjoy? What about the sense of place that we enjoy today? Well, let me assure you that the mayor and council's focus has not moved away from quality of life nor sense of place in the city of Perry. That's extremely important to us. We're going to do that through additional parks, and here we'll talk a little bit about that. There are going to be destination playgrounds. There'll be passive parks, neighborhood pocket parks, and our trail system. I have just asked a group of individuals to serve on a trail program to go back and reactivate our trail program and look and see what needs to be done to get it moving forward. So we will hear a great deal more about that in the future. As far as the events go, once we get through the pandemic, we're going to have a very robust calendar. We will start food truck Fridays coming up in the first Friday, or the first person will be in the Friday of the month of May. And we'll also have the International Festival this year in November, and we'll conclude the year with a buzzer drop. So we are moving back to a robust calendar. Now, as far as supporting the historic downtown, to me, that is the heart and soul of our city. As we continue to grow, it is going to be extremely important that we do not lose focus on our downtown area, and we continue to support that as mayor and council. Next slide. Thank you. We're working currently on the development of a couple of parks. The first I'll talk about is Pioneer Park. This is a sixty-one point three-five acre park that was part of the old Cherokee Parents Country Club. There's construction underway out there right now. This is a stormwater improvement project that's going to help the stormwater issues that are over in Idaho times area. It's also going to provide some paved parking. And we're also going to put earth and mounds in there with slides for children as a start. The second park is Heritage Oaks Park. This is a twenty acre park out on three forty-one to the west. It contains our old amphitheater we had there, and it's going to be used for Perry Presents concert series as well as our workout series on Saturday mornings. We're now discussing the upcoming Phase Two, which will include walking trails, public art displays, as well as restrooms to support our concert series out there. You know, in addition to quality of life, and to me, quality of life is living in a safe community. So I'd like to outline that major crime rate over the last four years has gone down thirteen percent in the city of Perry. And that's something for us to be extremely proud of, and proud of the police department that makes that possible. So again, working on quality of life and staying focused on that. I'd like to say that our city is managed very well on a day-to-day basis. And it's demonstrated by the awards that the city has been presented with. We have been designated as a Plan First Committee, or sorry, Community. We're one of thirty-four cities that have acquired that distinction. Keep in mind, there's five hundred and thirty-eight cities in the state of Georgia. We also have a Main Street program. We have been designated as a Water First Program, one of thirty-seven cities in the state. We're also a member of the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. And you asked me why that is important. We have received over four million dollars in grants from the Department of Community Affairs in the state of Georgia to support home improvements throughout the city of Perry. We're also a city of ethics. We're also a state-certified police department. We're one of forty-two agencies. And keep in mind, there's six hundred and fifty agencies that are eligible for that distinction. We're also recipient of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence and financial recording for twenty times over the last, since nineteen ninety-six. So it is demonstrated by the number of recognitions that this group has achieved for all the hard work we're doing on each and every day that citizens of Perry. This would not be possible without a strong county partnership. Where, as I mentioned earlier, we are currently working with the county as far as developing the Harris Track, Harris Track, easy for me to say, Harris Track Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is going to be a multi-train track, a multi-train facility. We hope that it'll be multi-trains in the years to come, but the initial train will be built for the city of Perry to, for us to process all the residential and commercial waste through that. The county is going to provide the land, and the city of Perry will operate the facility. And we anticipate that trains will be added as they add industrial complexes out there on the Harris Track. In addition to that, you heard me mention the new thoroughfare that is going to be built in the East Perry Utility District. We define that as South Langston Road, and the county is helping us at this point in time to find where that road should go, where the commercial node's going to be in that area, and will help us start moving forward with acquiring the right-of-ways for that road to become a reality in the future. But keep in mind, the county also is an important partner in the widening of one twenty-seven from Houston Lake Road all the way to King's Chapel. That's going to be a three-lane road. And the right-of-ways are being acquired as we speak, and I would hope that construction starts very quickly. In addition to that, I would want to outline the new future city hall. And I think all of you know that we entered into an purchase agreement with the county to purchase that and to repurpose it for the purpose of municipal court, city council, planning and zoning, and related staff functions in this building. We also plan to build a city administration building in the seven hundred block of Carroll Street. And this facility will house customer service and other city functions and operations. This is a further commitment to our downtown area. So now we get down to what the really important stuff. What does it mean to me personally? So if you look at our total city expenditures, and this is the money the city spends running our day-to-day business, our total expenditures over the eight-year period is up about a hundred and five percent. And we'll talk about that a little bit later on. But our day-to-day operating expense is only up seventy percent. And I would remind you that that includes twenty-four new firefighters, eleven new policemen, along with eight people in our public works, which is all needed to support the growth that we have going on. The amount in the yellow is basically other people's money. It's not money that we have expended through our general fund. This incorporates the grants that we talked about, the four million dollars that we received from DCA. In addition, it's the funding to pay for the new water treatment plant. On the next slide, we'll look at, these are actually the increases by category. And you can see that we, our general fund's up about fifty-eight percent over the last eight years based upon the growth that we've seen. One number that jumps out is the stormwater number. And have to keep in mind, that was not an entity in two thousand and twelve. But as we continue to grow, the federal and state requirements, I might say unfunded state and federal requirements that are placed upon us has caused us to put a stormwater district in place. But when it really gets down to it, you really ask the question about, what's it costing me every day? The one thing I'd like to point out is our mileage rate has gone down point five seven nine percent since two thousand and twelve and is maintained at fourteen point zero eight for the last four years. And I don't anticipate that will change in the next year budget cycle. So those are the things that I would like to say about Perry. I am extremely proud of the growth that we have experienced, and I look forward to answering any question you may have. Questions? Comments?
Nick, I have two questions about any claims to potentially add, if that's okay. One, would it, who was on the future city hall slide to include a breakdown of the space that we're going to utilize in the old courthouse to further explain why we need the city administrative building?
Well, we could, I think, add that the reason we're doing this because of fire, you know, making space for fire.
Right.
Might be something to refer to.
Okay. And then my second, what possible addition, would it be okay maybe to add a slide about the, I guess, like better word, restructuring we're doing downtown with sidewalks and parking and that sort of like that?
I think that's too premature. I think that, I mean, I think we're just now in the planning. I'd rather do that at a later date.
Okay.
Would you not agree, Mr. Gilmore, that we're kind of premature in putting that out right now? We haven't really, we haven't even agreed on that yet.
Okay.
But thank you for the suggestion.
I'm wondering about how specifically including any of the infrastructure assessment information that Robert has included in that assessment that he's done, and maybe feel like it's been addressed adequately in what you said, but growth always brings those questions.
I think the only two things he said about infrastructure was that we were going to put in those two generators. I think that's the only recommendation I remember that came forward. Is there additional infrastructure that he's talking about? And I think we're going to go ahead and do that, but those are the two things that I felt like he said.
Even including the information about how adequate what we have now is, might be great, Sherry?
All right. That's very good. Thank you. We'll do that. Yes, sir.
As to the cost of building, I see it going up. What do you see?
What's that?
Homes.
Yes, they're going up dramatically. We have the numbers on that. It's unbelievable, the change in the cost of lumber and wire and pipe, even if you can get it. The price of homes are going, are reflecting that throughout Perry.
Does that go stunt the overall growth, do you think?
Evidently it hasn't yet. I can't project the future, but I would say that, you know, if they hadn't slowed the builders down, they think that they've got a market for the house that they're building. I was astounded that the two spec houses that they're building out of Houston Lake Country Club are right at four hundred thousand dollars apiece. So the cost of materials is being reflected in the cost of housing in Houston County.
And you talked with the gentleman today, you mentioned that he came down and you spoke with him. What does he see the military budget going to be under the Biden administration?
Basically, now he talked about that, and he said that the budget had been withdrawn, and he didn't know what his budget was going to be. They haven't approved budget, but he said that that budget's being reviewed this time. That's all he had to say. I didn't say one way or the other. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments? Do you think that that's what the public is going to want to hear?
I think so.
Think so? Okay.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
I have one question after it's finalized and all put together. How will we put that into the hands of the citizenry? I mean, I know we can put it on our website and whatever, but are we going to take steps to maybe have paper companies that we put at strategic locations or?
In the presentation?
Well, unless if someone happens to miss your presentation, how are we going to?
It'll be available on the website. There's no question about that. But I would hope that if we get back to some semblance of safety for public meetings, that we would do this throughout town, just like we were talking about doing town hall meetings.
Oh, great.
Because, I mean, I'm doing this at Rotary and also Kiwanis next week. So I'll be making that presentation to them. So that's a start. And I would expect at that point in time, one of, you know, people asking us. And any one of you are welcome to make this same presentation, add to it, subtract from it, to anywhere you want to make it. I would encourage you to do that. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. And again, Ms. Clark, thank you very much. That was a lot of hard work. Item three B is Department of Public Works, three B one, is recommendations for facility security. And then Ms. Fitzman?
Thank you.
There will come a time we do not have to wait.
Okay, thank you. So city staff has really worked collaboratively in the last several months. point where we can come and speak to you about it tonight. I'm going to kind of go over some of the background of that process and then our recommendation for moving forward. This is sort of just an outline of some of the major topics we're going to hit, where we are now, our current conditions, what we need, and then how do we get there. So our current conditions include hardware and monitoring from several different vendors for different functions. Our access control is with Rossalar, video surveillance of various different platforms and camera types. Our intrusion is mostly handled through BTV and then fire suppression is with a different vendor, Georgia Fire Safety. So why do we need to make a change? We're having several fingers to the system. Hidden highlights, loss of power can leave doors open at times without an alert to anyone, locking people inside rooms. Multiple system resets are required. Some of our secure facilities, like records and evidence, can even experience loss of the access control. Communication between the buildings is also an issue. For example, if a new badge is created, if communication isn't restored between public safety and city hall, that badge is not actually activated until that connection is restored without modifications from staff. So there's just a lot of issues with our current system and our current vendor being able to address those issues. So what are our needs and goals? To utilize the state contract vendors, and this is in order to give us the most flexibility. A sealed, formal sealed bid would be really restrictive and costly and wouldn't really allow us to explore our options. So the state contract would allow us to sort of interview these vendors and figure out who's the best fit for the city of here. We also set a goal to find a vendor that can manage all of our different needs under one blanket, so that would be our access control, video, and intrusion, but having one point of contact, as you saw before. If you have an alarm problem, you have to call BTV. If you have an access control problem, it's someone else and you're contacting multiple people for different issues. We're really looking to make sure we had local support that could provide us with quick response times and then streamline the access between the control, access control and avoid our current failures. And then some of the last things, integrating our camera and access control. Currently, they're on separate platforms, so you're not able to quickly see the video that corresponds with an alert or a door failure, whereas there's software to support that now, where we can integrate our camera and see access control events that are happening in real time or through recorded video. Another goal is to provide controlled access to our park restroom facilities. That would probably just be on timer because of the limited need for any badge access or anything after hours, but currently, staff is locking and unlocking those restrooms physically every day. And then lastly, we wanted to be sure that we picked something that could grow with the city in our facilities in the future. So contacted three state contract vendors, Convergent Technologies, Adapt a Solve, and Net Planner for proposals. And then this matrix, which might be a little difficult to see, outlines the comparison. Highlighted in yellow is Convergent, which is the recommended vendor. And the pricing was really gathered in order to reinforce our recommendation and give us sort of an idea of what the cost will be, but the final cost will really be determined once we decide what phases and what elements we want to include in those phases, as well as what existing hardware we can reuse or repurpose. So Convergent has local support and made in. Their response time is a 24-hour maximum window. They provided the most flexibility because they were allowing us to integrate our existing cameras that are in good condition. Integrating the access control and video, like we were hoping, they also were able to incorporate a lot of our motion sensors and intrusion hardware into the same platform that would be used for access control and video. And they're really flexible with whether we choose local, cloud-based storage, how we would like to expand, including different types of cameras. And they were even willing to train some of our staff in order to minimize the amount of response from their staff for minor things that we might need help with. Also, Convergent is not a product manufacturer, so they don't push any one type of product. They can be willing to work with us to find the different types of hardware that the best that our needs, and I'll kind of go through what their recommendations are to begin with, unless you have any questions on this. Okay.
Are the other, are the other companies that you mentioned, are they also companies that don't make their own hardware and would just be advising, or do the other companies have the hardware?
The other two companies don't make their own products, but they were recommending a product that's proprietary, so it would require change out of everything, all of our, of our access control, all of our cameras, and it would be on one platform with one type of software, only supporting that type of product. So if we ever wanted to make a change, we'd have to redo everything all over again. So Gallagher was recommended for our access control. They've kind of broken down some of the hardware, software costs there by facility based on the number of doors. But some of the highlights of this is it'll replace a lot of our current system. We can keep some of our key cards in the short term, but basically it would renew all of our access control. But we would be able to sync, like I mentioned, our cameras into the same platform. You can remotely lock and unlock facility doors. A panic mode could lock down the building, only allowing emergency service key card access. You can upload your credentials to a smartphone, which I'll talk about a little bit later, to allow people in and out of the building using just their phone. And it would integrate our motion sensors for intrusion control. And Gallagher, although they wouldn't be, who our main contact would be, would be Convergent, they do have local reps here in the state of Georgia too. So how would this work? This is kind of the view of the actual hardware. So the cabinets can house enough of this hardware to control two to 20 doors. So previously, I'll notice each facility that we have here with the city has at least four loot boxes, now it's somewhere else. So it'll be a lot cleaner, a lot more simple. The controllers and the modules will be housed in the cabinet and then the card readers would obviously be on each of the control doors. And this is kind of a layout of how it would all work together. So there's, in the center there, the server would handle most of the main control of the system, but we can set up however we like how many people to have access to their respective control area, whether that be all of the city facilities or just the fire department, for example. Each of the buildings would have its own cabinet and hardware that would talk back to the server and then control access to the different stations. You'll see there, Milestone, Salto, those are the integrations that would allow the video camera integration, and then Salto's the remote locking for the restroom facilities and parks. So the city would own and maintain a physical server or virtual server on our property or on our network. We'd own our own records and data and software that's meant to protect us from outside attacks onto our network. The architecture provides more connection and integration to third party, just more versatility, and it's really designed for long-term use, not really renting, you would own this equipment. You wouldn't have to buy the software management agreement, which would continue to update the system. Once we do it the first time, it'll continue to work in perpetuity, but if you continue to update the software, that would also be beneficial, help with more of the warranties that would come with the system. So this is kind of a look of what the software would look like from the desktop or a mobile app. There would be a layout of the building. It would show you all the access points. If a room is red, then it's locked down. If it's green, then it's accessible. Shows you on the left how some of the cameras can be incorporated into the system as well. So if someone tries to open a door that's not a part of their access level, it would record a small clip of them trying to get into that door. The mobile app is supported on Android and iPhone. It would allow you to sort of remotely monitor, it would send alerts, allow you to do some more of the basic functions of the system. It would also probably work well with our alert system for city staff if there was an event or some type of emergency. And it also, as I mentioned, would allow you to, if you lost your car or couldn't find it, you could still use your phone as your access control into certain buildings. So this is sort of a list, as you'll see, some of them are just for Gallagher, which is the access control, and some of them are references for Gallagher and Milestone, which is the video and access control together. But there's a lot of federal and municipal references for these systems. I mean, I've spoken to quite a few of them. Seems like everyone has good things to say. A lot of them didn't even realize what they were using, which tells you that they're not having a whole lot of issues. So what's the next step? With your concurrence tonight, you'd be able to establish a partnership with Convergent, utilizing the state contract, then further develop a Phase 1 installation based on our priorities. The recommendation would be to change out all of our access control, card readers, key cards, and main panels, and then add the controlled access for the park restrooms. But then we can also determine the ongoing maintenance and monitoring that we would like, and that could be tailored to our needs, whether we would like it to be as needed, hourly rates, or if we wanted to set up some type of routine maintenance agreement with Convergent. Calling, so any questions?
Questions, councilmembers? So councilmembers, what are your wishes? Are you at a point that you would concur and move forward with the recommendation?
Initially, for just the access control keys and about $70,000.
About $70,000 for a system.
So we will go from two or three systems to one?
That's right. Well, it would be all, it would be all under one blanket vendor. Currently, we're paying multiple different contracts with different vendors. I think initially the cost will be more because we're having to change out hardware, but long-term, I think we'll get a better service for less money. Yes.
Ms. Gilmore, any comments from the administration about this recommendation?
Administration thinks it's imperative that we move ahead with this. We had some real problems during the pandemic. We've had problems with response from vendors, particularly at city hall, public safety's had some issues with them. We need to do something relative to, other than taking employee hours to handle the restrooms and the various parks that we have. So I think it's a very good idea. Recommend you all proceed.
Councilmembers?
Do we have the money?
Do we have the money?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
It will, it will depend on what the facility is as to where the cost would pay for it. For example, some of it will have to come from the general fund, some of it will come from SPOSS, you know, depending on what the particular facility is.
Everybody in concurrence?
Yes.
Do you have concurrence to move forward with your recommendation? Thank you very much for all the hard work. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item 3C is Department of Labor, 3C1, is a proposal to install ice vending machines at destination parks. Mr. Swan?
All good.
Right. I want to tell you who you are, I'm going to just go over. This proposal that we have, I didn't remember how to use this.
I think I turned it off.
Oh, turn it on. All right. So the reason we stand for you is proposal that we add ice vending machines to our destination parks. The objective is to add, you know, additional amenity to our destination playgrounds. We see that because programs are open now and get more participation, we got outdoor sports going, and our, our regular rentals, facility rentals, we think that it'd be a great amenity to have something on site where people could fill their coolers and fill their, like, fill the water bottles, essentially. And of course, it's always a great thing that we can create an additional source of revenue. So some considerations. So while I was doing the research for this project, I spoke with our experts, Mr. King, Mr. Mitchell, and Ms. Brooke Newby about, first, is this legal, something you can do with being a municipality and local government entity, and I would check a box on that. And Ms. King, I asked her about some history, has she seen anything similar in other governments? And nothing, this, nothing, nothing similar to this, but it's, it's dual and, and I guess, for lack of better terms, and Mr. Mitchell had a great insight into our approach. He, he recommended RFQ instead of, I think, you know, of course, I don't want to just go buy the vending machines and, but according to Mr. Mitchell, gave me great advice, so I think the RFQ would be, and I apologize for the mistype, the RFQ would probably be our best approach to this, and a lease agreement. So we just charge an interested party to lease the space within our parks and we'll just collect that revenue. Other considerations, of course, being we will have to provide a location and the utilities. So the concrete spacing, which I'll highlight shortly, is already in place, but utility hookups, these sites are already next to water and power. These are, these are proposed sites for Rosa Park. After, this, if, if you're not familiar with Park, this is the area going into the ball fields, it's a fixed area. We do have water hookups fairly close by, so we could connect and hook the vending machines up in one of these two triangular areas. So that's one of our first proposed sites. And in Creekwood, this area is located by our softball fields, next, next to our concession venue. So of course, we have water and power coming up currently there. And alternative site was in the parking area next to our football fields, where we can actually access the water and electricity as well. Now, what I'm asking from council is just concurrence, continue to research this, see if there's some feasible that we can go forward with, and if you're interested, first of all, if you're interested in putting vending machines, ice vending machines in our destination playgrounds. I hope any questions that you might have?
Yes, sir.
I believe I heard you say you asked somebody, is the city allowed to do paid commercial operations under the city license? Do we have, the city have to have a license? How does that work?
I'm sorry, what's the?
We have to have a city license.
Does the city have to have a license to operate this machine? Is that the question?
To be in the business.
My understanding is that the city wouldn't actually be in the business of vending. It would be submitting a request for a quote or a request, a proposal for someone who already is a vendor to lease the space from the city to be able to provide, basically to, to own and run the vending ice machine. Is that correct? So that particular vendor who, you know... So that particular vendor who, you know, would need a business license, but not the city, the city would just be leasing the space to whoever, I guess, most responsive to the request.
That's understood. I thought you said the city would be bringing revenue in, going away, bringing revenue in as business license from that money. So we get a percentage?
No, sir. The plan was to lease just the area, those, those areas that are proposed. And the person leasing would just pay us an amount, and that would be the revenue that we collect.
He would, he would make the setup, buy the machines and collect the money?
Yes, sir. Take care of maintenance and everything, yes, sir.
What percent of damage have we had in the, or was in the city? I might ask the chief that. Have they had any complaints about people destroying their property, stealing their ice, et cetera?
I'm not aware of any, Ms. John, but I could certainly research that, but you know, but nothing comes to mind. Thank you.
Other questions?
You may continue to research and see if that is feasible for the city to get into. I think that's what you asked me to do. Just continue. I think, first of all, I think you should continue because when it gets hot, people are going to want to manage.
Councilmembers, concurrence to allow him to move forward and bring back the proposal? All right. Thank you, Mr. Swan. We appreciate it. Item 3D is the office of the city manager. 3D 1 is schedule a town hall meeting for citizens' input for the next phase of time needed for. Ms. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on that outstanding presentation of the state of the city, may remember, one of the items or slides I had there was ideal park. We have had staff put together some suggestions about what would be good to add as part of the next phase. For example, a walking trail in the park. But I would recommend, if council concurs, that we have a town hall meeting over at the park and let the citizens come in and indicate what it is they may be interested in. For example, they could very well be fine with a very passive use, like some playground equipment for young children, okay? They may have some type of issue about having a walking track or some other type of facility type of things. They may want to have restrooms out there, and we may not want to have them. But I think it'd be viable, and this is historically what we have done, is to get input relative to the park. For the council members who are on council and may remember when we originally did this, there was a wide, wide range of activities and items that people want to have out there, a number of them in direct contradiction with the person who spoke right before about what they wanted to have in the park. And we have made a commitment to the residents in that area that it would be a passive park from the standpoint, there would be no organized activities like softball games, basketball court, you know, those type of things put in and out of the park. So if you all would concur with this, we'll set up some convenient time for mayor and council, get it advertised, put a time for the people to come out and participate in this. I would anticipate it'll probably sometime in late May or June so that we give enough people opportunity to be vaccinated and be comfortable.
Councilmembers? I think it's revealing April, not, not June, because it gets so hot. If you have it on the grounds out there, it's going to be mighty hot in June.
Well, my initial thought, unless it's not available, is that we would use the country club facility. Just rent that, so it's inside. Because one of the things I think that would be important from some of the experience we've had before is that we have in the evening, when a number of people are able to come and participate in the hearing. So may remember when we had, for example, the walkover mayor. You know, we walked through the neighborhood, which is very good, but none of the residents weren't there, because they weren't at for work, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, and you would want it in their neighborhood too, so they can walk over there if they say.
Exactly, yes.
I would think indoors would be good. It would be may or June.
And I'm, I'm very pleased that you all would have a meeting about that because, you know, I've had so many neighbors contact me about the park. And I think it will be greatly appreciated for the city to reach out to them and ask for their input. So I appreciate that for them.
Yep, just kind of following up on Ms. Peterson's comment. Some of you all may remember, we had talked about putting fencing in around the park. So we contacted all the affected property owners, and it turns out a vast majority of them did not want to fence it. But other than the park's fencing, we put right up my country club drive there. So that was very good by getting that input in from the public.
I would suggest that when you mention passive park, we need to really explain that to them. So once we start a, a conversation, they understand what it means, so it won't be out of hand. Like you said, some, some of that. So once you establish the point that this is what the passive park means and this is what you can do, then you're going to have that.
I would think the park is busy, will have to have a restroom.
We'll take that in consideration.
Other questions? So everybody agrees that this is a good idea to move forward with? If Mr. Gilmore could schedule that for the month of June, we would appreciate it. And I would anticipate that mayor and council would be there as well. Is that your intent?
I don't want, I don't want the administrator or the manager to take all heat on this.
All right. 3D 2 is neighborhood parks. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your package is a recommendation from me, which also follows up on the state of the city, how our little broader type of deal. One of the things we noticed is that there is a growing interest in demand for park space, not only the passive type of parks, but what, going back on Mr. King's point, about what you have classified as pocket parks, which are smaller parks that serve a particular neighborhood, don't have very many facilities there, maybe like some basic playground type of things or whatever, but primarily for the immediate neigh, for the immediate neighbors to use. And as we have the growth and the construction going on, that mayor referenced, we have not had a particular policy or process to move forward about addressing providing those parks in these new neighborhoods that are coming on. And my concern is that if we don't start doing something with that, then we're going to quickly run out of space, and it's going to be very difficult or even more expensive to provide something that we know our citizens are very interested in having. We're fortunate in a lot of the older neighborhoods or on the last initiative we took that was pitched and pushed by councilmember Bynum Grace about installing these type of pocket neighborhoods in the, in the various neighborhoods, like the one we have in Sand Hill, the one we have in Nuvo, you know, some of the others. And these parks have been, at least as far as I can tell, very successful relative to they are nice green spaces that's available for the neighborhood to use. So what I have proposed to you, if you concur with this, then we'll proceed about what needs to be done to actually enact it. But that we use a standard of approximately 250 single-family homes, maybe 125 or something like that. And then plan for having approximately a half acre, maybe acre-sized pocket park to go in and serve these neighborhoods. Now, one thing I want to emphasize, although this will be council's final decision, is that unlike some other type of communities, I am not recommending to you that we set this up as a land use requirement that a developer has to provide park space. My concern with that is, is that, first of all, whatever limit we say, the developer will come in one lot less than that to avoid that requirement. And what that can wind up meaning, meaning is the last developer to the table, so to speak, in an, in an area is going to have to provide all the respective space, which I don't think is correct. More importantly with that type of split, it'll be very difficult to have these pocket parks in the particular neighborhoods where we want them to be. So what I'm recommending to you is that you authorize us to proceed with the processes generally outlined, and we set certain criteria. It'll be monitored, you know, in community development, since that's where they see all the new subdivisions and everything. And then we would get with respective developers to come in and work out some type of arrangement relative to a park. Now, ultimately, what that may mean is that we use some of our SPOSS money to buy two or three lots in a subdivision, so the developer is not hurt relative to this process. And we can get the park located where it needs to be. Because you may remember, going back on Mr. King's point, these pocket parks do not require parking lots for them. They don't require really much infrastructure. All's basically just green space that we would own and maintain. However, it could very well be that you might have some developers that are interested in having some type of tax credit relative to the price of the property. I think once the program actually gets going, you'll see some developers interested in offering some type of space because it allows them to maximize and increase the price going back on the lots. Because generally, people are very interested in having their home close to some type of green space that they can take their kids to, or whatever the case may be.
And invariably, when you build a subdivision, you're going to have a spot that doesn't suit a home. We could load them on.
Yes, sir. Well, well, sometimes. I mean, we don't particularly want to have a deal, but yes, we get some leftover property, and it's a lot that just drops off into a ravine. But that's, that's my point where we get back with the developer. Though there may be some, just like you say, some odd type of configurations or whatever, that would work, you know, better. But ultimately, we would say, when you're coming with your subdivision or in this particular area, you know, this is what's going to have to be done if we work something out with the developer. Now, of course, each of these would come back to you all for approval, but that's a general process we're recommending.
Councilmembers? Questions?
Just got two questions. Well, a question about two locations at Wooden Eagle and in Grand Reserve, the little pocket parks that are there. Are those city parks or?
Those parks are not. They are not titled to us.
The ones that Wooden Eagle bought.
Oh, are they?
Yes. The one at Grand Reserve is not.
Yeah, for a while, the ones at Wooden Eagle were not, but we finally got that straightened out.
Would we make an attempt to acquire the one at Grand Reserve? So that it could be on the same basis with all the other parks?
Yes, we, we could. I'm not quite sure what the tie-in's in. We'd also have to check and see what they have relative to the subdivisions, covenants, you know, some of those type of things, and maybe some provisions.
I know we did corrective work on a big drainage thing they had in their little park that was somewhat dangerous, and they greatly appreciated that. But I just did not realize whether, I didn't understand if it was our park or their park, so thank you.
Now, if I may follow up on Ms. Peterson. Underneath this process, these properties would be titled directly to the city. So it would not be the obligation of the homeowners or any of that type of stuff. It'd be city park, city maintained, city insured.
Yeah, I've been looking at the Woodlands. I'm not sure that they would have an interest in selling them because they put in a very nice facility there. It's taken up three lots with, I believe it's going to have restrooms and everything else. And so I, I think that was built in as part of the whole design that the community's done.
Following up on that, if that's the intention of the developer, you know, to provide some type of facility exclusively for the use of residents, as far as I'm concerned, okay, because they basically have that space. Historically, what happens on that type of stuff, though, is that's very popular for the first round of the owners there. And then you don't have as much interest. The homeowners can't keep up with it. Somebody wants to know. And then invariably, they're coming back and asking the city to do two things. The first one is they want the city to come in and maintain it and to fix it up and to add other type of items. And then a lot of times, the other thing that comes in is they want the city to enforce it and not allow the general public to come in. And our position is no, you don't do that. Ask me title to us, and if it's a public park, then it's open to the public. Now, most of these public parks will not have, at least I'm anticipating, they will not have very much folks coming from outside the neighborhood. If you take a look at the number of our pocket parks right now, like the ones I mentioned, or Woodlawn Park. I mean, they're used primarily by the surrounding people. And, and most of the other folks don't even know that they exist.
I think that's a good idea. Like you said, going along with this concept. And as, as we monitor, as we go through sections, I think that's good for, for the community, you know what I mean? That we do that. And I know that Officer Wood, he'll be monitoring and making sure that everything go and that we take control of it and we manage it. Because I've been sitting on the board longer. Like you said, they come back and they want us to do it. I've seen that happen, you know, because somebody else built the park, but it got run down, and they want the city to take responsibility and bring it back up the park. And as you were, as I said, you were the one that tells us, and we're not going to do that because it's a problem for the people there, you know what I mean? So I think that's a good thing, that we can go forward and monitor. And I think in the years to come, it'll be good for the community as we continue to grow.
Okay, I have a question. And it's not about the growth of the community. It's about all of the established neighborhoods. If anybody remembers where the old State of the Flow Bear used to be, was the name of that area down from, um, the Trail Park?
They're, they're on Clay Circle?
Clay Circle. They have been asking for a park for a while. So as we are addressing future growth, we need to go back and look at that neighborhood we have been wanting for as well.
Yes, ma'am. That's a very good point. I mean, it wouldn't just be the new neighborhoods. We'd run an assessment and go back and check and see in other neighborhoods, older neighborhoods as well.
Any other comments? Mr. Gilmore, have your concurrence to move forward with this, putting it together and bringing it back to the council. All right, Mr. Gilmore, please move forward with that. Item 3, D3 is infrastructure assistance.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Since this is a highly technical report that Mr. Smith is going to give, he asked me to do it. So you can bet there's not much to it. Go ahead. The purpose of this study was, I think all of us remember, the huge problems and issues that occurred in Texas with the freezing up and the power failures and the water problems and all that kind of stuff. So taking a look at that, I instructed Mr. Smith to get together with the appropriate people and go back and run an assessment relative to the city's infrastructure so that we can identify if we have any type of problem areas where we can go in and take care of them or if there are issues with outside providers to make some type of assessment with that. Go ahead. So you can see the three major points from the assessment. You know, the assessment utility operation, our own, for sustainability and continuity. Identify the infrastructure and service provision, plus what vulnerabilities, either internal or external, there may be. But they focus on critical points of failure. And then explore options to make recommendations to address critical points if any of them exist. So the first... So the first area we took a look at would be who we partner with, if there are any, and how it comes in. The first one is electrical power. City of Perry has two providers for electrical power, George Power and Flint Energy. You see the number of customers and households that they serve. We went through, checked to see what they were doing. We, of course, do not have direct control over them. They are two, well, one is an EMC, and one is an actual corporation. However, we have been assured that they take care of and provide good backup services. Historically, that's happened. One of the other major differences I want to point out between the state of Texas and the state of Georgia, and I think the rest of the United States, is Texas made a decision several years back about maintaining its own electrical grid. And they did not make any arrangements for any backup from any other power providers that are outside the state of Texas. I think there may be one exception to that for one reason or another, which was El Paso. And if you'd watched the news, you noticed El Paso was able to come back pretty quick and take care of their issues where the other communities were not. We do not have that in Georgia. Georgia's part of an extensive grid that pulls support and power from the surrounding states. We're all tied in, and so we think that we're pretty well set there, though we will watch and check and see. We do have experience relative to how the power providers react relative to cold and freezing weather, for example, up in North Georgia. Or maybe we have hurricanes or severe storms, as down in Florida. And the power companies have a very good arrangement with service and each other about coming in to service and take care of that. So we don't anticipate that that would be a problem for us. To give you an example, a few years back, it was not a hurricane, and we had a major storm come through that knocked out power to our Frank Satterfield wastewater treatment plant. We were able to make one call to George Power, and they were back in and gave that the top priority and had stations back up and running within two hours' time. So we're very proud of the relationship we have with our providers, and we think we're probably okay with that. Second major power source we have is natural gas. As you may remember, we have natural gas for our households and also some of our industries. We have an arrangement with MGAG and Midstate Energy Commission relative to providing that power. And as far as we know, power source, as far as we know, that seems to be fine, and they've been able to address all the issues. Of course, the major thing for them would be when you have very cold weather further north, and there's a demand relative to the system. However, for several years, we have, the city has been purchasing firm capacity, and we're in a very good position for that. We have to pay a little more for it, but that firm capacity guarantees that we'll have that amount of natural gas for our use. Next area, as you can see there, are the city-controlled utility systems. There's really basically three. First one is the domestic water. You can see a few points indicating what infrastructure we have there, and then you also have the wastewater. The last controlled city utility system, which you don't see on there, of course, but I just mentioned, is our natural gas system. We, as the city, through a contract with ESG, are responsible for all the gas system infrastructure and incorporate limits of the city for our customers that we provide. Go ahead. So going through and addressing, so you can see the critical points with the water, wastewater systems. Our gas system is, is fine as far as we can tell. Didn't seem to have any major problems. Took a look at the significant investments currently in place. For example, the Tucker Road Water Facility. Identified nineteen critical points of failure, seventeen of which have generators. Critical points of failure are like lift stations or treatment plants, or whatever the case may be. And then the two that need to be addressed are the well number three, which is our newest one, and the Tucker, Tucker Road Wastewater Treatment Plant. Well number three is our main production well located out on 341, going out towards Perry Parkway and Fort Valley. The rest of the system seems to be in good shape. One of the things we did several years ago was to hire ESG. ESG has a regular ongoing maintenance program. Sir Anderson is here to answer any questions you may have. They provide to the administration every single month, a listing, an outline of all the maintenance work that they do. They have a regular schedule. They have a series of assessments that come back to identify the strengths or potential weaknesses that we have within the system. Number of the lift stations and pumps have heaters that they can incorporate if it looks like it's gonna get pretty cold. We also strongly encourage to take care of in our own facilities, for example, the right wrapping of pipes and everything. So we turn off our irrigation systems when it gets cold, you know, all those type of measures we take to avoid some type of infrastructure failure. Two facilities, like I mentioned, go ahead. Two recommendations, both of which are to purchase the generators. The first one would be the 600 KW generator for the Tucker Road Water Treatment Plant. In the original plan we had for the wastewater, or water treatment plant, excuse me, that was included in there. However, the estimated cost on that was around $800,000. That was provided to us, since we weren't quite sure about our loan amount, that was taken out. As you can see, we've done some follow-up research now, and that's estimated cost around $218,000. And then the second would be to purchase a generator for well number three, our primary production well, and the estimated cost on that is $75,500. The recommendation, as you can see, supported by the administration with this report, number one, is that our infrastructure and our providers were in good shape, in case anybody asks about that type of stuff. In fact, I think we're actually in very good shape. Just to give an example, you notice we have not had any issues in the paper recently about our gas system compared to some neighbors who remain neighbors. But we do think that's important, that we address the issue about power, because a lot of times, it does not necessarily have to be a major storm or issue, like a hurricane coming through, that can cause us some power problems. And so our recommendation to you is that you authorize us to proceed about going to bid, about getting these two generators. The cost for these generators will be paid for from the water and sewer revenue fund. Happy to answer any questions if you have?
Councilmember's questions?
I agree, I think we need two more generators. We've got, I believe, nineteen. Do we need two more?
We've got seventeen.
We've got seventeen, I'm sorry. And we need nineteen.
Right. The two that were missing, or the two that were recommended.
Oh, that was part of my question, was, was the need for these generators brought to light as a result of doing the assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, okay. And then my other question is just my own personal education, so that I understand the process. We purchase gas from the Midstate group. We provide the infrastructure for distributing it?
We have.
And ESG manages all of that?
Yes, pretty much.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
The process is, is that we have our own contract for our natural gas through Georgia Southern administered by MGAG. Midstate Energy Commission brings us our natural gas from the connection on the main southern natural main, coming to what's called the city gate. The city gate is the main register?
Yeah.
Coming in that's out near the intersection of Bear Branch, I think it's Bear Branch Road and State Route 127, House and Lake Road. And that's our main point where it comes in. At that city gate, the city gate is a responsibility of Midstate Energy's to maintain. Once it comes through those meters, then it's all ours. And we maintain all the other infrastructure within the city. And we have contracted with ESG to take care of that administration and maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. Are you in the current to move forward with the proposal or the recommendation for the purchase of these two generators? That will have to come back to us, I would take it.
Yes, go out to bid, and then we'll come back to you for a word.
If you would move forward, please. Item three E is the Perry Police Department. Three E one is a request for a fee waiver relative to the trust and natural record restriction event that's gonna be held in Michael 24. Chief?
Thank you, sir. I was driving. Thank you. Mayor and Council, mine's fairly straightforward, but I'll give you a little bit of background in case you're not familiar, because it's been a little while. The City of Perry is one of the favorite communities that's involved in a project called the Trust Initiative, which is under the auspices of the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the Georgia Chiefs of Police. And when we went to our initial training, one of the undertakings that is used in some communities to build trust between police and the community is something called a record restriction event. And that resonated with our community, and it's been on our list of things to do that have been put on hold by COVID. So we've made decisions, time to move forward. So we've scheduled such an event for April 24th in this facility right here, from 10:00 to 2:00 on that day. And what this does is allows any member of the community that's been charged by the Perry Police Department, that's not open to any other, you know, agencies, if you have not, this is all provided for under the law. If you've not been convicted of the crime you were arrested of, certain misdemeanors qualify if they happened before year 21, or if you completed a pre-trial intervention or diversion program, completed first offender status, or if your case has been deadlocked, declined prosecution, dismissed, pre-trial intervention, no bill, non-prost, not guilty or pardon, those are a lot of core terms. But basically, what it means is you got arrested and conviction did not result from that. So with our record restriction event, if you go to, say, a Pfeiffer job, or you go to rent an apartment, and they run your criminal history, then those arrests show up on your criminal history. But the law provides, if you have not had a conviction, then that can be taken, that's maybe misleading. Criminal justice can still see it, but employers and rental places and like things like that cannot. So this is a remedy offered under the law. The Trust Initiative wants to do an event, and what I'm asking from this body is that, and we, let me go back just a second, we have several partners, so it would be us, the municipal court, the district attorney's office, hopefully, although there may be a coordination point there, the bar association, the solicitor general, Georgia Legal Services, and a local nonprofit, will all partner together to do this. And what I'm asking is that you give us permission to waive our fees, just like some of these other agencies will do. And specifically, the fee for an expulsion or a record restriction to the City of Perry is $25. That includes the criminal history, which is required, and then the paperwork goes along with that. And I know Ms. Vonnegreys has been part of this, if she's got anything to add, I think I've covered it fairly well. And I'll let her make questions. Questions?
I have one. Okay, for instance, somebody had record of concern, my concern is that, as a councilman, if somebody come to me, I need to have more clarity, how I can, because I had a lady call me the other day, and I haven't called down to the office. If I pointed to the record, and I told them that they had called you guys, talked to you.
Absolutely. We, you know, we get calls like that often.
Right.
And we assist in any way that we can. That's, that's an ongoing thing. This particular event is, is like a focal point event, is a part of the ongoing dialogue between the police and the community.
Right. Let's see, my concern is that, look like, I need to know, or I had the information to know that. When somebody asks me a question, if I don't know the question, I said, dear, go tell me, call you guys.
Probably, in that particular case, I would be, is the best thing that we do to refer them to us, let us see what's on their history, share that with them, because every person's entitled to have their own run. And then you can, you know, we can see and we know what we're talking about, as opposed to maybe deal with the memory or, or something like that, deal with the facts that are on the record. Sometimes people think something's on the record and it's not.
Right. Okay, that's what, that was a question. I wanted to make sure that I give them the right information so they could come to you just like I did the other day, because I don't know, they have to, they have to call someone down at the police station.
They probably need to start with their criminal history in hand, which, which they can walk in and fill out a form and get for a $16 fee normally. Or, you know, we can help facilitate. The court does it all the time, Marion Arrington deals with that, and that's who my counsel is, particularly from my office.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I want to understand, this is for first-time offenders only, right?
Uh, that is one of the categories, Mr. Moore, but it's also for people that have been arrested but not convicted. Let's say, for whatever reason, you got arrested for something, and they presented it to the grand jury, and it got tow billed. In other words, they didn't return an indictment, then that would qualify. If it's settled the books at whichever prosecutor's office for some period of time, and then just got non-prost, which means they declined prosecution, then that would qualify. There's a variety of things provided under, under the law, but nothing that involves a conviction.
Thank you.
Questions?
In my understanding, is what you're asking for is just a waiver of the fee for the here at the event center?
Yes, sir, for that one event on that one day is what we're asking for.
And I guess the reason for the request is the fact that you're gonna charge for the service? I think that's what.
Well, it's on the city's schedule of fees, and so I asked Mr. Gilmore, and he said that I need to get the council's permission to waive the fee.
Mr. Gilmore?
I'm sorry, I may have missed, I think there's two parts to it. One is waiving the fee for here, and also waiving the fee for record request. Isn't that true too?
So from the City of Perry standpoint, it would just be the one expulsion of record fee, which is $25. That includes the criminal history as part of that, so sixteen for one and nine for the other.
Right. My understanding is you're asking council, okay, waiving that fee as well.
Right. Just that one fee, which is $25 total.
Yes, right. Everybody, there's two.
Two things.
Rental here, plus the record run fee.
Okay.
The fee that we normally charge anybody who walks in off the street?
Correct.
Okay, I understand the question. I was under the impression that the fee for using the facility had already been, so it could have been.
I have to worry.
I believe it has.
So what, to understand, is it two things, but one fee?
So it's a, there's two things required. One is running the history, and the second is filling out an expulsion form. Typically, if somebody walks in off the street and requests that through the city court or the city police department for something that we've arrested them for, then we charge them $25, and that includes both of those items.
Chief, I guess I'm outworked with you on this. The question I've got is, does that set a dangerous precedent for us for waiving those type of fees for people? I mean, if I came in on Monday, and it's like, we waived it on Saturday, why don't you waive it today? Man, that's, that's my only concern, is to, if we're setting some type of precedent on fee structures, I need your feedback on that.
Honestly, Mayor, I don't know if I can answer that. It's a first time for me, first time for the city. I can tell you that other entities across the I can tell you that other entities across the state do this. Pitt County's done a number of them. La Grange does them on a regular basis, other communities. The State Department Solicitor is a member of our team, and regardless of this, she's doing some research, which I expect to happen a day or so, about other solicitor offices that have done it. But it's a fairly commonplace event. There's a office in the state, it's on the GPI website, which has it to do with the waiver. And I can't, I honestly don't know if it's setting a precedent. I would say that if we link it to a special event only, which we wouldn't have terribly often, if somebody really had an issue with the fees, maybe we set up another process or they just have to wait till the next time to do that. That's just all to cover, so.
Just felt like I needed to answer that question.
And that, I think, would be my thought too. You know, everything has boundaries. You want to do it for free, you do it on a Saturday. I'm sorry you waited till Monday. That's the consequences of waiting.
All right. Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it does.
So council members, you have a request on the table to waive the fees that would be due for expunging records on the Saturday of the twenty-fourth. We have the current chief.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Item four is council member item. Ms. Bonner Grace?
Well, I'd like to thank the council, mayor and council for allowing the fix to be waited. We have been working on this. We went through that training that has been, this went over a year, hasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Almost two years. And I think it's something very necessary for our community. There are a lot of kids that cannot go to school because they did something really foolish at sixteen and can't get into a college, a good college, because of that. So I think we're, it's the right thing to do, isn't it? I want to thank you all for waiving the fee.
Anything else, Mr. King?
Good, you might, no.
No, ma'am. Nothing else?
No. Thank you for the work.
Okay. Thank you all. Dr. Aldrich? Mr. Hart? Mayor Brooke, welcome back. Ms. King?
Yes, sir. I wanted to reopen our former conversations in the past about our responsibility, what I see as a responsibility of council to put in place strong members of boards and commissions so that our staff liaisons have the people that they need to work with and can go forward with their responsibilities. And I know that at one point we developed the statement of interest, but never really went forward as far as big time in the general public to know that it was there. And so I'd like to just bring that forward again. I wish we could take some steps to make that document more public. We talked about the huge growth in East Perry. Thousands of people don't know anything about our boards and commissions, but they're citizens of Perry and they pay their taxes and they're, you know, they're part of our community. We need to make every effort to make sure that we don't just include our, you know, our sort of downtown people and those sorts of things. And I had one thought today that when, I think it's an excellent idea that boards and commissions discuss and discuss people and look at their applicants and make a recommendation as to who they feel like would be a very valuable part of their board or commission and then send that to us to make the final votes, since we decided to do it that way. That memorandum, like recently Jasmine sent a memorandum, if we could get that memorandum that was a recommendation from that board or commission along with a copy of the individual's statement of interest that they're planning to recommend, like that, if we got that prior to the arrival of the agenda where the person's name is already listed, that would be very helpful for us. I mean, I see it as our, a real responsibility on our part to make sure that we equip our staff members with good board and commission members so they can go forward and not be, you know, held back in any way. So I don't know, it's just something I feel strongly about. I just felt like if we got a memorandum and a copy of that individual's statement of interest, that that would be very helpful for me personally. And I also, I'd like that statement of interest to help with.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Gilmore, your thoughts on that?
It will be done.
Thank you very much.
Did want to point out, I don't think the application was sent, but your process about the application was done for the representative that's being considered for appointment to the.
We have talked about it today, and what we'll do is get the application out in the utility bills, and then we'll put out an electronic copy to the people who get their bills electronically, if we can do that, and we'll work with Tapper to make a bigger issue out of it on views and pieces and user fee and stuff like that. And so we'll put it out there broadly and then we'll see what interest we get back out there.
I just wanted every citizen to really get that they have opportunities.
Thank you. Reverend King? Thank you. Ms. Gilmore?
I have nothing.
Ms. Lou?
Yes, sir.
Ms. King? Mr. Worthing? Anything for us?
Early enough.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing further.
Chief Lynn, anything?
Nothing further, thank you.
Chief Park?
Nothing further, thank you.
Ms. Park?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, I'd like to commend the Leisure Services Department for an excellent special needs egg hunt this past Saturday. Ms. Turpin and I were also present at the event. We had a great turnout, great weather. Ms. Turpin said that she did hear that at least one family from Valdosta traveled to the event, and we heard nothing but great comments about the event as well as praise for the city for hosting it. So I really, Leisure Services did a great job putting it together.
It was a fun event. Everybody had a great time. Mr. Swan?
Thank you, Tapper. And I wanted to thank Chief Lynn, Chief Parker, and those council members that were there. We had a great event, we enjoyed. And for those that don't know, we had adaptive bikes. We had a vendor with adaptive bikes on site. You know that we're building, trying to form our city into a more walkable and bikeable community. So many of the kids had opportunity to fill out some paperwork and through insurance that they got approved for a few of the bikes. So they're going to be outfitted to get them an opportunity to ride that normally wouldn't have an opportunity to ride a bike. So that's one of the most, I guess, heartwarming, touching parts of the event, that they, some of the kids left with the understanding that they will have their own bike, they'll work to their specific needs. So other than that, we enjoyed soccer and baseball is going well. We got a house full out there tonight, and we're looking forward to the rest of our spring program. So thank you all for your support.
Ms. King?
I just have a reminder, the Department of Public Works will be conducting our spring cleanup event, April twenty-sixth through the thirtieth. More information is available on social media or just calling Public Works.
Just more?
Nothing.
Nothing. Ms. Ward?
Yes, I do have an, I need to discuss with you all this evening, and it's just getting in late afternoon, so I do apologize. I don't have a slide show for you, but it's time sensitive, so I wanted to have a discussion with you, as we talk about growth or change in the city of Perry. It's also an opportunity to talk about redevelopment opportunities. There we go. So we do have a buyer and somebody coming in town this week to talk about East Gate. It's an individual that has an interest in his properties in Houston County, and this is not a self-storage opportunity. This is somebody who has had his property on his radar for about a month after the last one fell through. And I'm meeting with him on Wednesday, myself along with Brian Wood and some of his team. And I wanted to just present some facts to you, talk to you about East Gate and the status of that property, its history, as well as the request for possible incentives for you guys to consider to help the buyer, if he's able to move forward so we can get the property under contract and actually see some redevelopment there. So East Gate is a five-point-six-ninety-inch parcel, and it's been vacant for a long time. There's two operating businesses in there, and it was approved and council did approve the Geral's recommendation to put it in our new city of Perry Opportunity Zone last year. So it has a ten-year Opportunity Zone designation, and what that allows for is if the new business creates jobs there, then they get a thirty-five-hundred-dollar-per-job tax credit. So we do have that for a new business. But we have long recognized that that type of investment to purchase the property and redevelopment is going to be outside dollars. We haven't found local developers or even developers in middle Georgia that are willing to make that investment. So it is mostly divided, it had twelve codes violations in 2020 and one crime. And just to put that in perspective, some other properties in our Opportunity Zone on Porty Hodges did not single-handedly have that many codes or crime violations. So, I'll say codes at least. So that one had twelve. One of the vacant retail in there has a food store or food service document that says nineteen ninety-nine. So that was last century, the last time that that food service permit was actually operating. Some additional facts that are maybe surprising to some of you, but they're exciting to me, is that within three miles of East Gate, more than nine thousand residents live there, which is almost half of Perry's population. And at the end here, I will pass you the X3 data so that you can take a look at that. On the second page of it, I highlighted the household incomes. So of that population, within a three-mile radius, over twenty-five percent of the household incomes make a hundred thousand or more dollars a year. And over five percent of those are making two hundred thousand or more a year. So we really do see an opportunity there for high-end redevelopment. And the buyer that we've talked to has experience redeveloping shopping centers. And one thing that really impressed me about him is that he asked for Brian Wood's debt for when we have the self-storage item. He doesn't want to do self-storage. He said, you know, what is the community wanting to see there? So we did show him the visual preference survey that was conducted last summer, where we had residents and the community say what they wanted to see downtown. And this is as an entrance to downtown. So when you look at, you know, East Perry growing, this is one of the main corridors of our downtown. It's an ocean of parking, and he wants to do what people in Perry want to see. So he's envisioning maybe splitting the building in half with a big alleyway and a pergola and lights part. The visual preference survey talked about outdoor entertaining, more dining options, destination places. And so he does envision this as a destination place on its own that's near the downtown. What I am going to pass out now is just a, this is just a conceptual rendering that a student is from Perry from the University of Georgia is working on a master thesis project, and his thesis is East Gate. So it's just some conceptual ideas of what a mixed-use multifamily could look like. This isn't the site plan that the buyer has in mind. He is planning to engage with architects and engineers during the due diligence period. But we do have Rob Rojeros who may be watching on Facebook Live. He was able to send us this as part of his thesis project, and is a long-term Perry resident. And we did show that to the buyer of what redevelopment could look like. So with that being said, I just wanted to have a discussion with you guys on, would you be willing to offer any incentives for a specific redevelopment of East Gate? And if so, what would that look like? State law has a gratuitous clause, we can't do property tax abatement unless we did a bond or title, and that's very expensive. So the question would be, you know, subject to a site plan of what council and the community wants to see, would you all be willing to waive building permit fees, demolition fees, et cetera, so that we could see a real attraction here in East Gate?
Ms. Harden did mention this to me this afternoon. I suggested to her to come in initially, talk with you on a concept possibility. I think the primary thing, or a couple of concerns that I have with it, is the incentives that you all have approved in the past have been to accomplish some particular activity or economic type of development that you all wanted to see in the city. For example, you all approved providing some incentives along the lines of waiving fees and everything for enclosed multi-story hotels. Y'all remember that? The last one we had was the one off the fairgrounds, because that was a policy that you all had established as something you wanted to do, was to upgrade the hotel stock in the city. You also provided the gas incentive downtown for restaurants that were coming in, because you had established that as one of your criteria that you wanted to have was non-chain restaurants coming in downtown. There may be some type of activities for this particular site that you may be interested in supporting, some of which I know it's not in the downtown district, but may relate to the downtown district. For example, you may remember or be aware in your master plan, they talked about multi-story housing type of options. But just initially on the surface of it, my concern would be if you granted some type of waiver for this particular site, what are you going to do for the next developer or person who comes in? And if you say, well, we're only going to be interested in doing it in a certain section of the city, I think it'd be very important about where you establish what that particular criteria is, as Ms. Harden has indicated in her reference there. Council has indicated a strong interest, not any incentives, but a strong interest in improving some of the structures and more variety of activities on General Court and Hodges Boulevard, but you have not put any type of incentives out relative to that. And I think if you don't have some agreed-upon criteria or general objective that you're interested in, that that can be a problem that'll come back to haunt you with a number of different developers and property owners wanting to get some type of relief. For example, going back on the hotel incentive, we did that for one hotel up there, the Abbott. Coincidentally, Holiday Inn Express already had come in and constructed their facility without the incentives. And after the Abbott, you all determined that the market was sufficient or coming back relative to that, and you ceased that incentive program except for the hotel right out on the Fairgrounds site, which had been a long-going objective, you know, that council had. So therefore, I guess, and I realize that, you know, Ms. Harden's on a short timeframe, but I think it'd be very important for council to determine what if they want to do another further set of incentives. And if they do, what is it going to be tied to? I would be happy to work with Ms. Harden to get some possible suggestions back to you, but I don't know whether we would have it by tomorrow when you meet again.
I personally think that's a good idea because, like you're saying, whatever we establish, you say we got other vendors who want to come to the city, they want to do business with us, so we just have to be careful. And I would appreciate that. You want to get together and we come up to a percentage of something to present to us so that we can know, like you said, going forward, because we know since Perry was on the growth part, we got other vendors who will come to the city up here. So we want to make sure that. So we want to make sure that we set our criteria right, that it be proper for every business or whatever we're going to do, that they won't, they won't come back to hunt us.
I think that this rendered is very exciting. I think it's very exciting. And I appreciate the fact that you said that it's not the purchaser's rendering, that he doesn't have one yet. And so it would be difficult for me to say, well, we could offer this or that, but he doesn't, you know, have his own rendering yet. And I understand, and I understand it's all speculative at this point. But I did have a question. When the new office complex buildings were built out of Courtney Hodges, did they receive any incentives?
That is on our new Opportunity Zone and so for something for you guys to consider, if you were wanting to look at a policy, would be, okay, properties in the city of Perry Opportunity Zone could be subject to incentives, you know, on a case-by-case scenario depending on what that development looks like. And if that wasn't the Opportunity Zone, because we were able to put the application in before it was completed and constructed, and so new business is to locate there, the behavior, health one, is a nonprofit, so they're not eligible. But the other one, Second Corinthians, if they have job creation, then they can get the Opportunity Zone tax credits through the state.
But the building is, the construction of the complex?
Not the building, yes. And what makes East Gate unique is that that's an existing fifty-eight thousand square foot building in Perry that's forty years old, that's nothing happened in twenty-two years, you know? New stuff, you know, all over town, you know, new public shopping center or retail place across the street, those don't need incentives. You know, I don't see Grover or the public shops that are closing and becoming light in it. So the way, you know, you could look at it is this is the only one of these that's close to downtown Perry that has this large of a land and a building footprint.
To me, Ashley, this looks like the kind of project that you want to find a way to say yes to, not like, oh, you know, not no right off the bat. We want to find a way to say yes because this would be such an enhancement to downtown. I think there are questions we just can't answer today.
I understand that. And I guess what we're looking for maybe by tomorrow night is, you know, even not, we don't want to go across and under deliver anything, but to at least let them know that, you know, if you're able to get this under contract, then, you know, the city would be willing to do this based on, you know, X, X, Y, Z type thing.
And it's in the Opportunity Zone now?
Pardon?
It's in the Opportunity Zone now?
It is, it is in the Opportunity Zone.
So there's some things that just come with that, right?
That's the job tax credits for the new businesses, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, when Ashley and I spoke about this this afternoon, I left with the impression that it wasn't necessarily, at least not tonight, but not, not what incentives will we offer, but is council willing to consider incentives for the right type of development? Clearly, we'll have to, you know, look more at what he's proposing to do there to determine whether or not incentives are appropriate and what those are. But that was more, my, my understanding is, is council, would council be willing to consider incentives if the right type of development occurs? And not specifically what those incentives are at this time.
We're open to looking at that. I would not want to make, I personally would not want to make any commitments or we're going to do anything until we have a clear understanding of what, what is going to be built there and does, does that meet our long-term plans for the city? I mean, I, I think Ms. Pearson is exactly right. There's a lot of unknowns now and I personally would hate to say, yeah, we'd be ready because we don't have, we have no earthly idea of what's going to happen there.
I just stick with my point, I'm already going to skip one side, you know? That's right. We can't not tell somebody we're going to do something if we don't know nothing. Like you said, we need to get more input from the company that's going to be there that we'll know how, if we're going to give them an incentive or we're going to say something about incentives. That's, that's how I feel, that personally that's the way I feel. Because we don't want to go into, I say, a blind situation, say yes and come out and we don't, we don't put our words out there and we have to go through what we say.
How quickly can you come back with something for us? I mean, basically, at this point, we're just hoping to be able to help him get it under contract and something, you know, on, hey, if it's going to be something similar to this or, you know, with an appropriate architectural plan, you know, council is in favor of seeing this redeveloped and then we can come back and actually get that formal incentive established for that property with an agreement, you know, X dollars a year, you know, that type of thing. The point, I guess, tonight is just helping us to help drive that plan, you know, this was almost a done project a week ago. We resurrected it this afternoon. There's another interested party that's a shot in the dark that has the opportunity to lock it up for the next nine months and nothing will happen in 2021. So, but this, this buyer has other experience with other redeveloped shopping centers, which it'd be nice to be able to, you know, give him a carrot or something to encourage him to be able to get it under contract so that we can see a redevelopment in 2021.
Was Brian, if that was accurate, what Brian said, that the carrot would be just that they were willing to, the council was willing to consider incentives? Or we will give incentives?
No, that didn't, that didn't come from the property owner. It would, it would help get the property under contract if the city did something.
My, I'm looking for something hard and I personally, as mayor, with that, with the information we get up here tonight, I, I can't make a decision towards that. Now, you guys can put something together that's, that outlines some criteria for tomorrow night and you want to look at it, we can consider it at that time. But I personally do not feel like that.
We can try something. But from the manager's standpoint, I don't think it's council's responsibility for a purchaser of a person, property decide whether they're going to purchase a piece of property based on what the city provides for incentives. If that's the driving issue with that type of stuff, then I would say no, because you don't know what's going to come out of that. The second thing is, I think it's very important for you all as mayor and council to establish what it is you're interested in doing for incentives. And then the developer can determine whether that's what he, she, or it wants to do. You see, I mean, rather than Velfer comes in with this proposal, which does look nice, and you potentially come back and say, okay, fine, and that's what we're going to, you know, consider incentives for and all that type of stuff, because then you'll have a bunch of other folks coming in. I mean, one of the things I see on this type of stuff, I mean, Ms. Harden talks about that's the only old building and everything, but you have the former Davis Oil building there on Jurgen, you have a bunch of other properties that are older, you know, that I'm sure, you know, that whoever the owner is would love to be able to market that, well, if you come into this particular place and this building is fifty years old, you see, I mean, or whatever the case may be, then the council is going to give you some incentives for that. And I don't think that that necessarily would be the approach that you want to take. I think it is important and we, that the East Gate Center wind up being redeveloped, okay? But I also think, following up on Mr. King's point, and we've seen this, at least in my opinion, in my time, in downtown, that downtown has come back and developed really well, filled in a bunch of enough spaces and all that type of stuff without any incentives, you know, from the council. And if there is something that council feels to be appropriate to have at a particular location, then I think that we find, see, I mean, but I think you should establish whatever your criteria is first.
Yeah, I agree with you because if you look at what we have downtown, and I can go through a list of people who are currently working on facilities downtown that have no incentive whatsoever, and I would expect that they would hold up their hand and say, people, I'm a block away, I'm, you know, I'm investing X thousands of dollars in this and why, where's mine? And which had to happen on the gas system. We've seen that just as quickly as we offer it out, we get phone calls about why, why aren't I included and type of thing. So I think we need to really understand this before we make a decision. That's just my position.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I think that's everybody here this evening. So, and like to remind everybody that our next meeting is tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock for our pre-council meeting here in this building. And then we'll have our regular council meeting at six o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Our meetings are open to the public and we invite your interest and participation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion, second, I want to say, to indicate a rating rating. We stand adjourned for tomorrow afternoon.